To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English or translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Christian, can you lead us, please? Thank you, sir. Trustee Reckler, can you lead us in the land acknowledgement?
We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chacheno Muikma Karkin Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to welcome everyone to this meeting. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person, through the Zoom app, and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. Dr. Hurst, can we have the roll call, please?
Absolutely. President Phillips?
Here.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds?
Good afternoon, everyone present.
Trustee Reckler?
Good afternoon, present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Good afternoon, present.
Trustee Christian?
Good afternoon, present.
All is a present and accounted for.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to move to item A6, which is disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. This evening, we have four items. Public employee appointment, public employee performance evaluation, public employee discipline, dismissal, release complaint, student discipline expulsion, stipulated expulsions. Do we have any public comment on the items for closed session?
No public comment at this time.
Saying none, the board will recess to closed session. We will be back out at 6:30 to reconvene open session. Thank you. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English or translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. I would like to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Board of Education. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thanking contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect. Provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate. Serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded, lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society. Take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community. Provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating. Respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the members' own personal interests. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person, through the Zoom app, and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item or non-agendized item within the jurisdiction of the school district. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. We're now going to go to item B2, which is report and ratification of closed session. However, the board simply recessed closed session, and we will be going back into closed session later in the meeting. So with that, we are actually going to go to public comment. Again, this is for all items on the agenda and items that are not on the agenda but that are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are in the audience and wish to speak, please fill out one of the orange speaker cards and turn it into staff before public comment begins. If you are in the Zoom, please raise your hand before public comment begins. Once public comment begins, whether you are in person or on the Zoom, you will not be able to get into the queue. So please turn in your card or raise your hand in the Zoom. We'll give folks a few seconds. All right, going once. Going twice. Gone. The last hand is the Black Parent Resource Center. Erica Yanez, you snuck in there, is the last hand. And the second-to-last hand is the Black Parent Resource Center. We're going to begin public comment with the folks who are actually in the room. Number one is Janie Dalton.
Hi. I'm going to read my daughter's letter to the head of the FDA. She is an El Cerrito High student. "I am a high school student near Berkeley, California, in a school district that recently mandated COVID-19 vaccines to everyone eligible. I am writing this letter in hopes of persuading you to help the United States approve a safe and traditional vaccine for public use." Can I take this off so I can see?
I'm sorry, you need to leave your mask on.
I have to?
Yes.
I really can't see. "A traditional vaccine basically mimics natural infections. Simply put, an inactivated virus is injected into our body. It stimulates our immune system to wake up and build an army of antibodies to the viral invader. The mRNA vaccine, however, works much differently. Particles of mRNA that code for the COVID-19 spike protein are encapsulated in a nanoparticle envelope, which essentially tricks the cell wall, also made of lipid, into thinking it's not a foreign invader. It's like a hijacker hijacking a plane by disguising themselves as the pilot. Instead of the normal immune response, this synthetic mRNA instructs our bodies to make COVID-19 spike protein. After this spike protein is made for a period of time, our bodies finally build up the antibody armies to fight it. Accumulated data of the mechanisms of how injury takes place from a COVID-19 infection in our cells and tissue shows that it is the spike protein wreaking the havoc. This spike protein injures our cells and blood vessels and can lead to dysregulation. For example, COVID long-hauler syndrome happens when the spike protein wakes up a sleeping virus like Epstein-Barr. The only vaccine currently available for my age group is the mRNA Pfizer vaccine. This vaccine is based solely around the spike protein, the highly toxic mutation hotspot. We know that COVID holds more risk for some people than others. Older people and people with comorbidities are far more likely to get sick and die than young, healthy people. It is a deadly virus. Many have died and more likely will. As for the increased risk of myocarditis and pericarditis with mRNA vaccines, specifically in young men under 30, the CDC says..." This is a very complicated, hard to understand, so I won't even say it. In other words, I'm not going to say their sentence, but I'll give you guys the letter. "In other words, they acknowledge the risks from the vaccines are higher the younger you are, and the risks from COVID are lower the younger you are. The studies in Israel say that a teenage boy is six times more likely to be hospitalized for myocarditis post-jab than to be hospitalized for COVID-19. Add to that a greater likelihood of adverse reactions to the vaccine with previous infections, and the mRNA vaccine is definitely not a one-size-fits-all. The crazy thing is, my friends who have gotten the vaccine were all more sick than I was when I got the actual virus, and some of them even had more severe and long-term reactions."
Ma'am, your time has expired. Please conclude.
Okay, it's a really good letter. So if someone else would give me their time, I'd finish it.
We don't actually swap time. But is this the same letter?
No.
Do you want to give this to staff? If you want, give it to staff, and then they'll make sure that we all get a copy of it, okay? Thank you so much. The next person is Sheila Swift.
Hello. My name is Sheila Swift, and I brought a letter from another mother to read to you. It's quite long. I know I won't finish it in the two minutes that I have. I did make six copies that were delivered to you so you all could read it. And perhaps you might have also been emailed this letter by a mom from our school district named Alina. I'm going to start with a really important paragraph of the letter, and then, as I have time, I'll read from other parts of the letter. "Two days ago, I spoke to a good friend, an undocumented mother of two WCCUSD students from Mexico. She is opposed to the vaccine mandate for the same reasons I am. She wants to be the one who makes the call based on her rationale, makes the call on whether or not her children are vaccinated. But she said she felt she had no voice, literally and virtually, as she does not speak English and she's afraid of retaliation based on her immigration status. She also said that her friends in the same position feel the same way. Although the parents may be vaccinated, they are opposed to vaccinating their children, which is a completely rational decision considering the unknowns. I promised her I'd convey her message to the school district. That's also part of the reason why I'm writing this email." So I wish I could read the rest of the letter, especially information about an Oxford University study, but it is in the letter that I think each of you have, and you can read it and respond. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. So we will now move to individuals in the Zoom.
Our next public speaker will be Dee Wills. Please state your first name and unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Derek Williams, actually. My kids have a use of the computer. I'm not sure what they type in. I know my time is limited. I hope everyone can hear me. My kids are students at the Virtual Academy. It's week 11, and we still feel as though the academy's not ready for our students. In week 10, we didn't have textbooks or access to curriculum. Teachers are just now coming online, and I just don't understand for the life of me how in the 21st century we can be facing these kind of deficits with children. With the pandemic raging and the vaccination mandate looming here, it just seems like a natural progression that parents would want to investigate the Virtual Academy and what independent study can offer. But what they're going to find is a program that's barely running, in my humble opinion, and so many failures in terms of business services, allocating funds for this program that was meant for 75 students and have enrollment clearly over 250 at least. As a parent in this school district, I'm demanding better from the school board. I'm demanding that they take a better look at what's happening at the Virtual Academy so that these black and brown kids can get access the way they need to. And that 10-week deficit in instruction is unacceptable, and it lays at the feet of this school board. I don't find you taking this seriously. Way back, you should have been planning for this, and these kids are paying dearly for instruction promised.
Our next public speaker is Nicole. Please state your last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Nicole Reader, and I have questions. I hope that's okay. I know that they may or may not be answered, but I just wanted to throw them out there. Concerning the COVID vaccine, I am really wondering why the WCCUSD has their vaccine mandate on such an accelerated timeline. As far as I know, it's the most restrictive vaccine mandate of any school in California. I could be wrong on this, but what research I've done, like in Oakland, LA, they're not requiring it till January, and early January. And at least that would give my kids time to finish up most of their semester. I have two kids at El Cerrito High, including a junior in high school. And as we all know, junior year is pretty important academically. We will not comply with the mandate, just for some background. We won't comply with the mandate, so I will be pulling my children completely from the district. So I wish they could finish their semester, so that's kind of where I'm coming from with these questions. So I'm curious, why such an accelerated timeline? I believe Berkeley is offering a testing option, which I know Ms. Smith Folds suggested, but she was overruled, so I'm not sure why that's not an option. Also, the fact is that 12- to 15-year-olds, the COVID vaccines are still under EUA for them. How can there be a mandate for something that's still under emergency use authorization only? And then I had a question about how do I obtain an exemption for my kids if this really goes down and they're not allowed back in school on November 16? And then finally, I just applaud the man who spoke. I believe his name was Derek. Thank you, because I was wondering about the Virtual Academy, and now I have my answer. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Hulan Barnett. Please unmute yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, no, I want to applaud all those first two speakers. And I want to say, first of all, the reason I believe that this mandate is in place is because of our county supervisor, John Joya. When I saw him in a meeting a few weeks ago, he was gung ho about this, and he's really doing it because we're dealing with the West County where there are a lot of bilingual parents and a lot of poor, a lot poorer community. So I think if you really want to know what to do, deal with John Joya, vote him out of office. That's the first thing I think you should do. So, and do your research on it, because he's been the one that's behind it. But my biggest concern I call for is because everything seems to be focused on the pandemic, but my daughter goes to Highland Elementary School. And in the summer, I reached out to Demetriel Hoi, and... And the one thing I pointed out was... There are red zones where parents park and block. They literally block vehicles from getting in or out. And so to me, that's a safety issue. And I'm hoping that the superintendent and Demetriel, and I'm going to give you now, my name is Hulan Barnett. My phone number is 510-932-1167, and my name is spelled, as you see it, H-U-L-A-N-B-A-R-N-E-T-T at yahoo.com. And you are more than willing, I'm willing to let you see it, because sometimes people don't believe. And I believe with the new superintendent, being the military man that he is, he'll come out and take a look at the safety issue. And I'm just saying, if my child is involved with something that's not safe, there's going to be a problem. And I can't speak for other parents, I just know myself.
Next public speaker is Kimberly Chamberlain. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. I have spoken with you guys on numerous occasions regarding remote work policy for our employees. Obviously, you're hearing me because I have been getting some communication from our district regarding this, and I applaud you for that once more, as I did last night. I'm also grateful that you guys all passed the new positions to go to the public and have people apply and come work with our wonderful employees that we have in this district. Tonight, I would like to give a little standout to the employees of this district. Yes, we have our weeks, our months, whatever we have out there, saying, "You're a great administrator, you're a great this." Every week, we should be applauding everybody that is coming to work daily. I've been sitting in meetings, I've been hearing conversations. People in this district need to be applauded for showing up. They are doing their darndest out there in this workforce. They are working with children, with parents, with you, with me, with other union leaders, and doing their best to make sure that they are giving 110%. I just want to applaud all of them. I thank them for every day that they come to work. They make my life easier, and I believe, wholeheartedly, they have the best interests of each person in this district when they come in that door. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Alamo Brown. Please unmute yourself.
I'd like to say good evening, everybody. This is Rodney Alamo Brown, a community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. There's a few things I want to talk about this evening, and one is very concerning to me. We're talking about El Cerrito High football coach Jacob Rincon and what's been levied upon him. As we all know, the situation was brought forth by the Richmond Standard, it was in a few other publications. But what's them, this whole thing was ex-NFL football coach Jim Moore had a complaint, and then, of course, ESPN analysis, Herb Kirkstreet had said something about it. From my understanding, the details that I got is that the coach, Jacob Rincon, was not even present when the situation occurred with the football drill concerning the football players on the field. So of course, we understand he's on administrative leave pending investigation. Honestly, there shouldn't have to be an investigation if the person who was responsible was fired from the coaching ranks two years ago. So I don't understand how the scenario came back up or what brought this upon, or whatever the situation was. However, it's a serious, serious situation concerning a young man who has been doing an outstanding job at El Cerrito High School. Not only is he winning football games, but he's coaching kids to win in life as well as he's responsible for numerous players going into the collegiate ranks. Now, another situation that's occurred in Hercules Middle School, a parent called me today, a very, very deep concerning issue that we should take real responsibility for, and we should really be focused on this. The intangibles of the situation is very alarming. The mother is going to speak upon it a little later on on this telecast, and so when you guys listen to what she's saying, listen to her heart and listen to what she's saying. This thing should not be swept under the rug, as the principal at Hercules Middle School has done. This is a serious issue dealing with safety of our children. God bless you all. Thank you so much. Good night.
Our next public speaker is Jose De Leon. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Superintendent Hurst. First of all, I'd like to thank, by thanking all the administrators in our district for the work they have been doing with our classified or certificate at staff on campus and how well they're working to communicate with their families in as many languages as needed. Also, Adam has shown an ability to continue to pivot as regulations and policies have changed. That takes a lot of work and planning. They're putting in the time to make sure they make their campus safe for their students and for their staff. The key for them is that they listen to the parents, to the students, and to the teachers, and then take that information and collaborate with them to make the best decision for the site. The key for them is communication. They need to continue, the district needs to continue digital communication, phone calls, and written communications so our families in our sites know what's coming up next. Also, the teams at the sites are working to balance several things. One, SCL curriculum, there will always be a focus on academics on sites, and they have the added pressure of... And they have the added pressure of staff shortages. That work principals being in the classroom teaching, assistant principals being in the classroom teaching. When things go wrong in a site may have up to eight teachers out. So we want to make sure that clear and timely communication continues to come out to implement any new procedures or policies that are coming out. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Stephanie Saketa. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. This is Stephanie Saketa. I'm coming here representing as an MDA coach here. I was hoping for my fellow coach here, Erica Cruzes, to speak before me. But we wanted to bring up some concerns in regards to COVID platicas that we've been having with United Latino Voices in regard, and in conjunction with Healthy Richmond in regards to the COVID, COVID testing protocols that are happening and the, the registration form that are going on. Highlighting more the concerns of the Latino community at the moment. We just want to make sure what's going on within the schools or within the leadership in regards to supporting our parents to assist them in regards to filling out the forms. We know that they're having some Zoom conversations at school sites to help assist them. But our, our Latino community has raised a concern during these conversations that they don't have access to that accessibility at all times. The forms are all in English, so they're not language accessible. And the other biggest concern that has brought in that many of our students might have, might not have insurance. And if they do, subject to input that they do not have insurance, they're being asked for their social security number. Most of our Latino community have raised the concerns that being immigrant, whether they're children or themselves are immigrants, they are fearful, fearful in, in putting that number or not putting that number. And that might bring about saying their immigration status. I'm just wondering what's the, what is being done in regards to these fearful concerns that our Latino community is having? You can continue to reach us out as MDA or participate in any of these conversations that we're having. Flyers are being sent out directly to the schools, but these are doctors from the county having the conversation directly with the Latino community at different school sites. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Erica Cruzes de Zavala. Please unmute yourself.
Erica Cruzes? Me escucha? Si. Okay, perfecto. Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Erica Cruzes. Vengo aquí representando también a, a MDA, verdad, como padre. Siempre estamos viniendo aquí para apoyar a nuestros aprendices de inglés. Pero ahora nos encontramos con una gran colaboración con el grupo de voces unidas, HAC2 Richmond, el distrito, y un enlace corporativo con Kaiser, verdad, llevando pláticas a todos nuestros padres hispanohablantes. Explicando la importancia de vacunarse contra el COVID y dirigido obviamente por, por un doctor hablando en español directamente a todos nuestros padres. Me encantaría, me. Carit? All right. So Erica Cruzes is here representing the MDA. She is the co-chair. And she was mentioning that she has been together with a community group called, you know, United Latino Voices. They're doing a lot of work around COVID education in the community. And that will be, she paused just for me to translate. Adelante, Erica. Me gustaría haber tenido un idioma universal en este momento, verdad, para que nos entendiéramos y nos pudiéramos comunicar y no tener estas barreras del idioma. Pero me encantaría más que el distrito nos apoyara a todos los padres, verdad, de habla hispana y no nomás los que hablamos español, sino los que tenemos otro idioma de, 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 del idioma materno, verdad, que no nomás es el español explicando. Estas pláticas. I wish I can have a universal language where we could all understand each other. But since this is not the case, I wish and I pray to the district that we try to work with every single parent in our district, not just the ones that speak Spanish, but all the ones that get set aside or they lose information because they speak all their language. Go ahead, Erica. Gracias a estas pláticas y desde que hemos estado apoyando a todos nuestros aprendices de inglés, nos hemos dado cuenta que el idioma es una de las grandes barreras, verdad, de información. Porque muchas de las informaciones que nos están brindando están nada más en inglés. Videos solamente en inglés para poder aclarar. La tecnología muchas veces es muy difícil manejar el sistema. Muchos no cuentan con una computadora o un sistema operativo para llenar información. Entonces estamos pidiendo obviamente que, que, que apoye a todos nuestros padres de habla hispana. So of course, we know that not only the language is a barrier to be able to communicate with our families, but also the technology, because we know that not everyone has access to a computer or to an operating system that will give them access to the communication that is often sent just in English. And you know, there are many ways that the district is communicating with us, like through videos or other, other venues. But once again, this is only in English. So this becomes also the biggest barrier. So I wish that the district makes a bigger effort to be able to give access to families. Is there still, Erica? I guess that's it.
Our next public speaker is Jonathan. Please state your last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Clay and I'm calling on the matter that the gentleman talked about earlier today involving my daughter Jania Clay. At Hercules Middle School, there was an incident that occurred where the little boy brandished a knife. And the school basically tried to sweep it under the rug. They didn't contact me or her mother immediately. All we were told was they expelled the boy. They didn't make a police report. They didn't do anything that they should have did correctly. And then when we asked them about it, then they want to go behind that and do it after they're being told about it. I don't understand how this isn't a serious matter to have a weapon pulled on another student and y'all don't want to address it. That's all I would like to say.
Our next public speaker is Francisco Ortiz. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening Superintendent Hurst, Board members, staff and community. My name is Francisco Ortiz and I'm an alumnus of our district and a fifth grade teacher at Ford Elementary on release to serve as community schools organizer and vice president for United Teachers of Richmond. I'm here today to support and stand with our MDA co-chair Stephanie Saketa and Erica Cruzes. Call to action in support of our multilingual students and families. The district has a moral, moral and legal obligation to be responsive to the linguistic diversity of our students and families. Given that multilingual students bring extra concentration and supplemental funds to our district, it is a district's responsibility to meet the linguistic tapestry of our community's cultural wealth. Multilingual students have to learn quickly to navigate their home culture and language while also adapting to the dominant language and societal norms of the US. Imagine for a moment, having the resiliency and tenacity to accomplish this formidable task as a youth. But on top of that, being denied access to COVID testing because your family doesn't have access to the dominant language, a computer, or the linguistic capacity to translate complicated technical medical jargon in your second or sometimes third language. The district needs to increase its capacity to meet the diverse linguistic needs of our families. As a member of the school's neighborhood action team, we have requested on multiple occasions to meet with the district leadership around COVID protocols and concern that our community has lifted when encountering testing accessing challenges with the new testing company, LSA. Please respond to the recommendations outlined in the letter that has been delivered to you. Provide Spanish speaking access to the COVID-19 testing and vaccine appointment system. Modify the appointment system questions that ask for health insurance information and social security numbers. Provide Spanish language video or explanation of how to navigate and complete the testing application to help parents complete it. And train school community outreach workers to support parents who not have access to computers or internet within this application. A couple more, but yeah, I know you're going to read them in the letter. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Our next public speaker is the Black Parent Resource Center. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. I just want to thank everybody for coming and supporting our black students. And I just also wanted to remind the board that a lot of the community needs support around getting information with COVID and a lot of the black parents would like more information on what's our options for the board supporting us with getting exemptions, if that's what we would like to do, or even just getting support to get the vaccine. There's a lot of layers for the black community, why we feel unsafe with this. And I think that the school district can be a good vessel to make black parents feel safe or feel supported, whichever their choice is, with us having choices and getting the information that we need to make our community and our schools safe. So thank you.
And our last public speaker for tonight will be Erica Yanez. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Hello Superintendent and members of the board. My name is Erica Yanez. I am the Policy Advocacy Manager at Healthy Richmond. In collaboration with United Latino Voices, we are actively implementing a project called Mis Acciones Salvan Vidas, where community health advocates are canvassing at the neighborhood level with current information from CCH Services, including COVID-19 clinics, vaccines and updates. Secondly, we are having Platicas con un Doctor, where doctors from CCHS and Lifelong are in real lifetime listening to Latinx parents who have the opportunity to ask questions and get clarification on vaccine information for their children, testing and how to best connect with their child's school. We have found two major concerns from the Latinx parents. Parents want a timely response to their concerns related to the district's COVID response in regards to testing and vaccines for students in appropriate languages. For example, there are 32,000 students enrolled in West Contra Costa Unified School District. Of those, over 8,000 are English language learners and have families where Spanish is their primary language. Over 56 of the students in West Contra Costa Unified School District are Latino Hispanic. We are sure many of those have parents whom Spanish is their first language. The second concern is transparency in how the district is allocating funding for EEL students. We ask that the superintendent and boards of the member meet with this collaborator within the next two weeks to address these recommendations and concerns for our parents. Thank you for your time this evening.
This concludes our public comment for tonight.
Thank you very much to everyone that called in and sent emails as well, because some of the calls were actually follow-up emails and they, they were received specifically Mrs. Sakera and Mrs. Cruzes. So we are now going to be moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is agenda review and adoption. The board can I have a motion to approve this agenda?
Same with President Phillips?
Moved by Trustee Gonzalez Hoi. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Seconded by Trustee Christian. On this evening, Trustee Gonzalez Hoi is actually starting us off. So sir?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes?
Reckler, yes?
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes?
Co, yes?
For you, yes?
Phillips, yes. The most and carries. Thank you. We don't have any consent items or superintendent communication or action items. We have one item tonight, which is under discussion, that is the equity audit. And I will turn it over to Dr. Hurst to begin.
Thank you very much, sir. It's my pleasure to introduce three members of Illuminate Ed Collective. And that is Cheryl Hiblin, Janie Christakos and LaFaye Platter. And what I wanted to share with the community and with the board is that we have been very consistent in our messaging since I arrived here in May around what the process would look like for the equity audit. And I shared with you consistently that beginning in July, that they would look at all areas within our learning community and look at all departments and data as well as far as a listening tool or and surveys. And they have been doing that. I've also shared that consistently that there would be a report out of the equity audit beginning in October. And that's really what tonight is about, to begin to share the first phases of the recommendations and key findings and two specific areas that Cheryl Hiblin will speak about. One of the things I will share and remind the community consistently, we also have been sharing that once we finish with this phase of reporting out and then also on November the 4th, that we'll start the process of revisioning our mission statement as well, our core values and some other work that would all lead to our strategic planning process. So again, I'm excited to have these three people here this evening. So we're going to introduce Cheryl Hiblin and have her introduce a guest as well.
Good evening Superintendent Hurst, President Phillips and Board Trustees. My name is Cheryl Hiblin and I'm the President of the Illuminate Ed Collective, an educational consulting group contracted by the superintendent to conduct an equity assessment within your district. Prior to founding Illuminate Ed, I spent 21 years in the San Diego Unified System, 10 as a high school principal and six at, at the central office as an executive director supporting secondary efforts. I am joined tonight by two team members. First, let me introduce Janie Christakos, retired Associate Superintendent of Business Facilities and Operations from San Bernardino City Unified School District. Janie spent 25 years in the K-12 system and is currently overseeing the California Association of School Business Officials, CASBO, Business Executive Leadership Bell Program. I would also like to introduce Dr. LaFaye Platter, Retired Deputy Superintendent of Human Resources for Hemet Unified School District. LaFaye spent 25 years in K-12 systems and is the co-facilitator of the Women in Educational Leadership WELL Program for the Southern California Professional Development Federation. The scope of work for this assessment included working collaboratively with the superintendent to determine the delta between the district's vision for equity and the impact of systems, system processes, procedures and practices on student achievement. As we conducted our assessment, we reminded ourselves of your district's mission and equity statements, which gave us a North Star or an ideal state from which we could determine a baseline or current reality within the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Six areas were examined. Human resources, finance, curriculum and instruction, professional learning, schools and schedules and communication and stakeholder relations. As we examined each area of this assessment, we As we examined each area of this assessment, we kept our focus on equity, specifically asking ourselves throughout the process whether we were seeing evidence that the processes, procedures, and practices within the system ensured that each student in West Contra Costa Unified was given what they needed, when they needed it, in the manner in which they needed it. It was also very important that we were aware that COVID-19 had placed incredible strain on systems, and we were careful to examine what occurred prior to COVID-19 rather than simply what was happening now. As we discuss our assessment methods, I want to point out that we are not researchers. Our lens was that of leadership and systems expertise. Qualitative and quantitative data was collected through stakeholder interviews, which I would define more as conversations, artifact analysis, data reports, stakeholder surveys, and our upcoming classroom observations, which will take place October 25th through 29th. And just a note about our stakeholder conversations. While informal in nature, they allowed us to lead with humility and understand the unique context of West Contra Costa through the lens of its residents. These conversations yielded rich additional artifacts and information that was invaluable to the process and took us well beyond the initial artifacts we had requested. The findings and recommendations from our assessment will be delivered in two sessions. Tonight's presentation will highlight our team's findings and recommendations from the Human Resource and Finance Review. The findings and recommendations from a review of professional learning, curriculum, and instruction, schools, and schedules, and communication, and stakeholder relations will be delivered on November 4th. The November 4th meeting will include student group data that I believe will be very informative about the differences in student group performance, access, and opportunity across your school's clusters. There are significant findings in these areas. While you will hear specific findings and recommendations for each area reviewed, we will also lift three themes that cross all findings. These include a need for universal system structures and alignment, a need for attention, adequate attention to equity, access, and achievement, and a need for timely, effective, and reliable communication. Before I hand things over to LaFaye, I would also like to share on behalf of the team that it has been very evident throughout this process that the greatest strength in your system are the people. So many people we interviewed live and work in West Contra Costa and are committed to making sure that the system is the best it can be. From our perspective, your staff has been transparent and hopeful throughout a process that has certainly made them feel vulnerable at times. Your union leaders are terrifically candid and cast a hope for strong collaborative opportunities in the future. Your community partners are eager to align efforts and partner meaningfully with the system. Your parents are hungry for authentic communication and collaboration and continue to focus their attention on ensuring resource and achievement equity. And although my only communication with your students came from a survey, their comments were raw, honest, and reflected a sense of hope. And with that, I'm going to hand things over to Dr. LaFaye Platter.
Thank you, Cheryl. Superintendent Hurst, President Phillips, and Board Trustees. It has been an honor and a truly pleasurable experience to work with your team. They are dedicated, resilient, and have been willing to be transparent and authentic in sharing their perspectives. Tonight, I would like to begin by sharing the lens through which I approach this work. I regularly engage with districts, county offices, and other organizations all over the state. No doubt, 2020 was a difficult time for everyone. Much of the automaticity that existed within organizations was taken away because of the actions that were required because of the pandemic. However, amidst the chaos, some unexpected benefits emerged. The pandemic provided opportunities for organizations to provide professional development to more employees through remote learning systems. People reported feeling more connected to coworkers because they had an opportunity to get to know them better over Zoom. They could see their partners, their pets, their children. And organizations began taking this highly disruptive event as a catalyst for needed change. Most of us have dedicated many years to the work of improving the lives of children. I personally view this work as an opportunity to partner with other like-minded people who truly believe that what we do here matters for children. Peter Singay said, "Most problems are systems problems, not people problems." Decades of leadership experiences have shown me that this statement is absolutely true. As Cheryl mentioned, when we calibrated the findings from each of our assessment areas, three themes emerged. From a human resources perspective, it became clear that there was a need for universal system structure and alignment, specifically in the areas of department organizational structure, internal and external communication, aligned processes, action plans, and clarity in roles and responsibilities. In addition, from a human resources lens, there is a need for improvement in communication that fosters positive experiential outcomes, builds quality relationships, trust, common goals, inspires engagement and creativity that all boost morale. These themes are important because when systems and communication in the Human Resources Division need attention, it's very difficult to support equity, access, and achievement. And as a result, the service to the ground in the form of staffing schools, hiring employees, retaining employees, and building the capacity of staff is compromised. This has a profound impact on the ability of the system and school sites to stay focused on utilizing human and fiscal resources to ensure academic and resource equity. Before I delve into my findings and recommendations, I want to emphasize the overarching importance of role clarity and feedback. That the importance that it will have as we work to support the Human Resources Division. It sounds easy and simple to say that it's essential to clarify roles and responsibilities throughout the organization. However, this action is easier said than done, and it takes time and patience. But this clarity will help those in the organization expend less energy, ironing out redundancies and interpersonal conflict. The operation will be more efficient with less stress and strain. Clarifying roles and responsibilities helps with hiring as well because we can determine if an outside hire is a better choice or if an inside candidate can fill the position. Giving and receiving feedback is an essential activity for leaders, and this behavior provides necessary information so that support can be given to the team members and clear the way for an efficient flow of work. Most feedback should be given face-to-face or by phone if possible. The least effective methods are email and text. This slide I've included because the takeaway is significant, and it falls in line with the qualitative data that I got from the district. This was extracted from a survey of 899 employees. The bottom line is that employees want to hear corrective feedback given in a constructive manner from their leaders, and they believe that this feedback will help them be better at their jobs. The employees that I had conversations with exhibited a strong desire for constructive feedback and guidance. And now I will begin to share some opportunities I discovered. The Human Resources Department should follow best practices for internal communications to function effectively and efficiently by ensuring that face-to-face leadership presence is increased to provide opportunities for receiving and giving feedback. Only then can the department begin to engage in a cycle of continuous improvement. There should be an immediate clarification of roles and responsibilities that includes cross-training so that when one person is absent from work, the workflow and service to customers and potential hires is not interrupted. Along with daily leadership presence, which could also be called management by walking around, there must be regular meetings that are structured for engagement, creative problem solving, and increased morale. The next finding relates to external communication, which is foundational to customer service. This slide illustrates what we all know to be true. When people are not treated with high levels of customer service, first they tell others, and then they simply disappear. This could happen with employees or with parents and students. Setting up a system of communication that simplifies customer service best practices is important. We need to implement a method of external communication to provide the best service to all stakeholders by first defining what excellent customer service is in each particular role. There are some generally accepted principles of customer service, but each person will have to apply those principles to his or her role. We must collaborate with all internal team members to create and continually adjust processes and procedures so that they are receiving timely and accurate service. There are reports of potential employees going to other districts because they're not receiving timely responses about their employment status. To hire and retain the best and brightest, the system must be refined for efficiency. This will require a collaborative effort, not only with the business department, but with site leaders as well. We're going to forward now to a graphic before I go into these other recommendations. This graphic is about position control. These recommendations will be discussed here and when Janie speaks, so you will see some of this again. The district's position control process and related internal controls must follow industry best practices. The position control process is carried out in three places. Budgeting, human resources, and payroll all play a part in making sure that the function of position control is accurate. The position control process begins with the superintendent and cabinet reviewing and approving new positions. This is simply another graphic, which Janie will go into in more detail in her presentation, illustrating the position control process and that it has checks and balances in three places. The accuracy of this process is critical. Over 90% of your budget is in people. Combine that number with the reality of declining enrollment, and you can certainly understand the importance of getting these numbers right. And now we'll go back to the slide. We must first have collective agreement about what industry best standards are for position control. Without this understanding and agreement, it's impossible to produce accurate staffing projections. Communication between budget, human resources, and payroll should occur regularly about issues and improvement to this process. A logical next step to accurate position control is to plan for adjusting staffing at the site at a predetermined time at the beginning of each school year. Some districts call it Third Thursday. Planning for this process is necessary because maintenance and operations employees must assist with moves and other adjustments must be accounted for. Because position control is not clearly articulated in the district, there are several classes, as Cheryl has found out, that have 10 or fewer students in them. This obviously has a huge fiscal impact. The negotiations process and outcomes also have a significant impact on the fiscal health of the district as well as every leader's ability to direct the work of employees. This process has the potential to harm the culture of the district if it's not handled appropriately. The lead negotiator should be able to produce an agreement that can be quantified for a multi-year projection. The lead negotiator is most often the head of Human Resources, but not always, who gets a tremendous amount of support from the CBO. However, currently, I recommend that you hire a negotiations expert to provide support to cabinet and the negotiations team. The expert should produce a system of transparent and productive negotiations. This expert should be asked to produce necessary documents and data ahead of time so that the board, superintendent, and cabinet can make informed recommendations before the negotiation session. Finally, this expert must be able to provide total compensation comparisons. Janie will discuss more about what that means in her presentation. The fiscal health of the district relies on the outcome of negotiations. An organizational chart, much like a school site's master schedule, tells the story of a leader's philosophy and how that person intends to accomplish objectives. The organizational structure of the Human Resources Department should be reviewed and adjusted so that there's responsibility and oversight for all high-level functions such as position control, compliance with laws, complaints, and data systems, and that this oversight is clearly articulated to everyone in the organization. Health and welfare can be a full-time job and should definitely be someone's primary role. There is also a benefit to having the risk manager position in Human Resources because this would allow for the coordination of processes and communication to the employees. I've seen those positions in business as well. Payroll, which is currently housed under purchasing, should be placed in the fiscal division. After roles and responsibilities are clarified, a gap analysis should be done to determine where additional staff is needed. A review of job description should be done to determine accuracy. This is not an uncommon need in districts. Finally, processes must be examined and discussed. Cross-training must be provided, and ongoing professional development with teaming activities are vital to the morale, efficiency, and effectiveness of the department. My last two slides contain a list of processes that either need to be created or just simply reviewed and adjusted. Again, not an uncommon thing to do, to align with best practices. But before I share that list, I want to say a few words about the change process in general. This slide shows John Potter's Eight Step Process for Creating Sustainable Change. It is certainly not the only model out there, but it will help me illustrate a few points. First of all, we are very well aware that just because we give these findings, that people are not just going to be excited about change. Change brings with it sometimes fear and anxiety. However, working within a model for change that has been proven to work will help with the process. Many people don't mind change if it is something we do with them and not to them. Potter's first step is to create a sense of urgency and highlight the need for change. By commissioning this work and assessing your current reality, you have done exactly that. This work will spark motivation in the team and get things moving. I have already witnessed with my interactions with team members, they are hopeful. Hopefully, the downside of not changing will be clear as well as the opportunities that exist with the change. Giving people the opportunity to ask questions, get involved, and provide solutions is essential for success. The remaining steps in Potter's model are equally important. However, I wanted to highlight the fact that you have begun with the necessary and often the most difficult first step. I look forward to working with the team through the processes that I will list on the next two slides. Working with team members here in the district, I have identified the following processes that should either be simply reviewed, created, or adjusted. Processes and procedures should be people-independent so that changes in staff do not disrupt the success of the organizations. The processes named are as follows. A Human Resources Annual Calendar of Events that is connected to the overall district calendar of events and heavily articulated and coordinated with any deadlines in the association contracts will allow the department to backwards plan so that they are well ahead of the game and being proactive as opposed to reactive in as many instances as possible. We've already talked about staffing projections and position control, and Janie's going to talk a bit more about that. Updating and reviewing job descriptions is something that districts have to do continuously, not just here in West Contra Costa. The recruitment screening, interviewing, and reference check process should be clearly articulated, and it should be standardized so that it is the same from one site to another, from one department to another, and that everybody in the system knows what to expect and what to do when. The onboarding of staff at the district at the At the site and in departments will ensure that you're able to bring people into your culture in a manner that you want to see propagated. Making sure that fingerprint clearances are assured, credentials reviews are are up to date. And then with investigations, it's important to communicate to everyone what should be done in-house versus what should be done by an attorney. What can be done at the site with appropriate training versus what needs the expertise of someone from human resources. And then going on to workers compensation and return to work processes. The workers comp process makes sure that when people are injured on the job, they get the timely and appropriate care that they need. However, if people try to gain the system, that system is there to make sure that 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 does not happen. And a healthy return to work progress is good for the mental health of the employees because they are doing something useful. And it also helps the district because people who know the culture and who know the system are able to do things that they can while they are healing. And then also you're doing contract tracing. And we have to look at when people are out and make sure that human resources is providing substitutes for those people and communicating. With principles for how that will that will be done because it definitely affects employees. In closing, I would like to thank you for your kind time and attention. And we look forward to working with you as you move through this process. Are there any questions that I can answer for you at this time?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Board for questions piece on the presentation, starting with Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips. Thank you so much for your presentation, Dr. Platter. And for all of you for being here tonight. My first question. Um, it's kind of a larger question. How does human resources and finance affect? The rest of the system and what we'll hear on the fourth.
Okay. Uh, great question. It those those foundations in the processes that occur in both those departments. Are the foundation for what you're going to hear on the fourth. When human resources is is following best practices. And when finance is following best practices, it allows for. The best opportunity for what we're all here for is equity, access and achievement for all students. And you're going to hear a lot more from Cheryl. However, when those processes are not flowing smoothly, it's a it's a detraction. And the resources are not getting to the people that they need to. And the human resources are not being utilized fully because when we're thinking about. Things that need to be automated and trying to fix those things, we're not using our creative creativity to think about how we can be doing the best thing for students.
Thank you very much. My second question, Dr. Potter, how would you describe an industry industry standard for position control for general public?
Okay, Janie's going to help me with that one, but it is housed in in three departments. There needs to be a healthy check and balances for that. So if you think about why there needs to be that checks and balances, just imagine and not saying this happens here. But just imagine that if one person is able to hire somebody, they're able to place them in a position, they're also able to play. You know, to pay them. But so I'm going to let Janie take that one, actually.
That's a great question. So industry best practices call for a division of duties, appropriate division of duties. Timely processing. Because we know that if it's not done timely, it impacts everyone that we serve. Accounting for the positions and the cost in a timely manner. We want to analyze our staffing and adjust our ratios and enrollment. Again, it ties back to being ninety percent of our budget. It's very critical. And um, ensure that the source of funding for each new position is identified prior to. You know, establishing that position and hiring. So as LeFay stated, those division of duty, so you saw the slide, see how they overlap? That relationship between HR, budget and payroll is critical. There are, you can see in the big area that each of these departments have specific roles. But they interconnect. And so they come together to make sure that that we have an accurate counting. It's critical. For the fiscal health of the district. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. Thank you very much. My third question. Dr. Platter, what are the biggest themes for professional development opportunities that you see are needed in our HR department? Or that you would implement when the recommendations are implemented in our district?
The first thing that I would recommend is, as I was mentioning before, is. The creation of an annual human resources calendar that that is heavily. Combined with the district's annual calendar and has specific. Key deadlines for certificated and classified. And that is, and this is the key part, that's articulated within the district, I mean, within the department. So that everybody can start coming together in an engaged way to backwards plan for things. So that if we look at the the district's overall goal of teaching and learning and hiring the brightest and best and all of that. We need to plan ahead of time and get creative about when we do those things and you you can't do that. If you don't have an annual calendar that's connected to deadlines and that you've talked about heavily within that department. So that would that would be thing one. I would then recommend that processes and procedures be reviewed. And again, that's not something that I would recommend here. I would recommend that everywhere. That 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 the departments that have, if you look at the chart, have position control responsibility. That they come together. Just a quick little story in one district that I worked with, there was a disconnect between human resources and payroll. And position control was housed in both those departments. So what we thought was people problems ended up being a systems problem. Because there were emails going back and forth, there was arguments. And when we put the two people from the departments together, we had, we talked about position control. We had payroll go in one room and write down what they thought human resources did. We had human resources go in one room and write down what they thought payroll did. When they came back and did the big reveal, they just started laughing because they realized that the left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing. After that, we let them create what they felt was the ideal process. They built it together. They went out and they beta tested it for a month. They began to talk to each other. They were at each other's desks. They started making adjustments to the system. We came back, we accorded and then. We went back out and when they had beta tested it and reached a certain goal, we inked it, so to speak. And they continue that process today of constantly looking at those processes. Everybody who touches that system understands in a very deep way what goes into it so they can make make rational decisions. So that's that's very key and important. So and then, you know, going on from there to continue to make in the calendar adjustments to systems.
Thank you very much for that answer. My last question, Dr. Potter, for me is. A lot of us here and a lot of staff in our schools, we have a lot of urgency, as she's shared in your slide. For change. In your opinion, and looking at our district specifically HR, what would be a realistic timeline? For implementation of some of these changes and to see long-term change in our district?
Well, if if I can answer that from the standpoint of all of the people I that I talk to. I would say that you're you're in a very enviable enviable position because people are ready. They are willing, they are hopeful and they want to, they want to be the best. They're they're looking for it. So an annual calendar of events can happen in a couple of sessions with the right people in the room. What's going to take more time is is determining what's priority. Because you can't fix everything at one time. Everything can't be a priority. So determining what what process should we look at first? And then working through that process, determining what process should we look at second? And keep in mind, while people are trying to revise processes and systems, they still have their regular work to do. Normal work is still going on, so we'd have to carve out some time for that. But getting down the what can happen very quickly, but then actually doing the work. But I believe, you know, within, gosh, I would say you would see some progress. Gosh. You would see some progress right away, just because there's collaboration, but I can't give you an answer as to how long it would take to do it all. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Dr. Platter. President Phillips, that's my last question.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Reckler.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. If I may just follow up on what trustee Gonzalez, who I just asked, we're talking about years though, right? I mean, we're. We're like, we're talking years of change.
For. Oh, no, no, not at all, not at all. The example I gave you of human resources and payroll coming together. It took about thirty minutes for them to recognize what the root cause of the problem was. All of the the problems that we thought were people problems were systems problems. It took about thirty minutes for them to have the big aha that, oh, my gosh. This person isn't bad. We just start talking the same language. We created within two hours on that first day what they thought was the ideal process. But then they had to go out and beta tested it, beta tested. And they decided that a month was was an accurate amount of time. So these processes and systems, they don't take that long to start correcting. But improvement comes tends to come in inches, not yards. You know, because people have to test, they have to adjust and all of that. We are not talking about years. We're talking about months.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, you're going to go much deeper into position control. Is that correct?
Janie is.
Okay, so then I'm gonna, I'll save that. Will you at some point provide an optimal organizational chart for for each of these departments or for HR of what you think it might? Look like or?
Yes, we've been working with the superintendent on developing that. We're still at the high level of that, but we'll continue doing that. It's very difficult to go very deep. Into that without being in the district and we're going to have a little bit of time to do that coming up. But but absolutely, that's one of the one of the most critical things on the on the list.
Okay, and then can you talk about where payroll is located? And. Yeah, and I'm going to include it here because you talked about it, so I'm just gonna.
Yeah, Janie's going to answer that.
So my understanding, it's under the director of general services, so it's in the business division. Normally it's housed with fiscal services, the budget area. And right now it's under purchasing. It's a director of general operations, I believe is the name.
The way it's set up here is unusual. Have you seen that elsewhere?
I've never seen that. I've always seen it reported to the director of fiscal services or director of accounting. So I've not seen it placed in outside of that.
The same question is for risk manager, which we actually just approved last night and put it in business services because I forgot. But we're going to be doing a lot of changing, so I don't think it's a big deal, but can you explain why that might be placed in HR over business?
And yeah, and it could be in either place. It absolutely could. I've seen it in both places. I felt most comfortable with it being in human resources because so many of the employee issues that come out of risk management. We were able to meet together with the risk manager for return to work issues and. Compliance issues and quite, and sometimes there would be behavioral issues combined with health issues. And it just made it easier, but I would say there's no right or wrong with that. It's perfectly acceptable to have it under business as long as there's communication across the silos.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for this round. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Smith falls.
Did you have an opportunity to look at the desk audit performed in, I believe it was twenty nineteen?
I did not look at it, but several of the employees in the department referenced it when I was talking to them.
Thank you so much. Can you tell me what are some examples that you found or some examples that you can just give of what poor customer service would look like in this?
Absolutely. Principals reported that whenever they need a question answered, that it had to be by email. Which is one of the lowest forms of communication and that when they send an email, they get an auto reply back. Because people in the department are busy. I there was one person that I called and this was a couple of weeks ago and it said, due to district closure, you need to go and send us an email. I have principals who need employees at their sites and they're not getting timely responses about positions. Do you want me to go on or is that or is that enough?
I would love for you to go on, but can you give me maybe two more?
Okay. Oh, let's see. So the biggest internally, the many of the employees within the department. Talk about needing responses more quickly to be more effective in their positions. And then I guess the last one would be the loss of. Potential hires because of a lack of a timely response to about their employment status. That's probably. Well, they're all critical, but that one is pretty devastating.
Thank you so much. And then what are the dangers of manipulating the process to get individual desired outcomes?
Well. Without having a specific example of what you're talking about, just in general, anytime there's manipulation. For the purpose of an individual purpose, that's not serving the system that would. To me, assume that there's not collaboration and it's not in the best interest of the organization's goals. So without a specific, that that's about as broad an answer as I could give.
Are we, are our processes people independent?
No, they're they're not. First, many of them are not clearly defined or communicated. And they might be communicated to some people, but they're not communicated to all stakeholders. And the one example that I have that they're not people independent is that there's an employee who was out for several months and when she got back, there were some. Very critical issues that she had found that hadn't been taken care of. So so we just just really have to make sure that there's cross-training and that. That also ties in with the onboarding process. When we bring people into the district, they need to know exactly what their role is and you can't do that if rules aren't. Clearly defined and clearly articulated.
Thank you so much. That's four.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Christian.
Yes, thank you, President Phil. Thank you, President Phillips. The first question will be. How would you rank? The system of communication? How would you rank it? One through ten? How would you, what kind of rank would you give our communication?
I I would, I would rank it very low. Email and text is your lowest form of communication. In human resources, it just requires conversation. You have to talk to people. There are so many intricacies in what happens. And people have questions and in an email, you can't convey the tone. You don't get to ask follow-up questions. You can't get your problem solved.
Yes.
Now, I'm sure that there are many reasons why people use email and that's not the question you asked me. But just to answer that question, I would just have to say that people need to talk to somebody. They need a body. They need, yeah.
All right, thank you. And the next one would be something like similar, but clarity. You was talking about clarity. Can you rank clarity? Is clarity clear? I mean, it's things coming across. Everybody understand what's going on, clarity.
So if you, so so just want to remind everybody that that the the information that I'm providing is coming from the internal and the. External customers. And they described that, you know, quite often they don't know who to call or they might know who to call or who to email. And they don't get a response back, so it's not really clear in many cases. What the process is, who you know, who's doing it, who's in charge, who gets to direct their work. So I would rank that low right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And feedback is always good to have.
Yes.
So how would you rank, rank feedback, feedback coming back?
I'd say that's one of the most critical, critical components in everything, because, you know, as leaders, we need to get as much feedback as we give, I would say, get even more, because then that informs leadership. You know, that informs what, what we do. And I'm, I'm, I'm just getting a sense that there's just so much work going on. There's so much busyness that there's not this back and forth feedback that informs continual and continuous improvement.
Okay.
Yeah.
And my last one is customer service. How would, how will you rank customer service?
Well, I would, I would rank it as a finding, as something that definitely needs to be improved on. But, but, you know, first of all, we have to define what it is, because what one person calls a really good customer service, another person doesn't feel that. So I always go by the perception of the customer, the person that I'm serving. How do they feel? And the people who are being served do not feel that they're being served timely, accurately, or, or in a, you know, in a manner that, that they need. They're not getting what they need in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Co?
Yeah, so first, my first question would be regarding the assessment method. Can you talk a little bit more about how stakeholder interviews were conducted? I know that you said that they were a little informal, but were there some sort of requirement or characteristic that you looked for in the interviewees at all?
I'm, I'm sorry. What, did she ask how stakeholder interviews were held? Yeah, so they were, they were, they were held by Zoom. Yeah, so, yeah, by Zoom. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so, like, were there certain characteristics? Like, how were they chosen or selected to be interviewed? Just what was the process like, aside from the logistical of it being over Zoom?
Yeah, so I began by talking to Marcy, who gave me the names of a group of people. And then those people then gave me names of other people who gave me names of other people. So from that, so again, starting off with Marcy giving me a list, and I spoke with probably every Association head and the people who worked with, within the associations. They gave me names of principals. I talked to principals from all three levels, middle, high school, and elementary school. I spoke with everybody I could get in touch with in the Human Resources Department. As a matter of fact, when I was finished, I was getting emails and calls from people saying, you didn't talk to me, you know, can I, can I call you? So that was the process that I used to get started, and, and that's how the other names got on the list. Right, right. And then there was calibration across all of those sections.
And I know that you mentioned that they're going to be over, that they were over Zoom, but are these available to the public at all? Will there be any, like, recordings being published, or is that not allowed? Just want a clarification on that.
Are you, are you asking me if the comments from the individual people are available so that people can see what each person said? I'm having a little bit of hard time hearing.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no.
Okay. And then, since you had said earlier that these plans will take place soon and not over the course of a few years, like trustee Reckler mentioned, what other forms of communication is best for communicating, if not through text and emails? I know that you said conversation, but, you know, given our circumstances, what is another form or alternative?
Okay, I'm getting translation here because I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you, but I think you're asking how should people be communicated with? As much as possible, face-to-face, by Zoom, which is acceptable now because of COVID, or by phone, especially when it involves anything that has to do with discipline, a process, anything that needs to be talked about, which is most things in Human Resources. Email is appropriate for following up on what you've already confirmed, just to confirm this. Facts, figures, dates, times, those types of things. But most of the time, the emails that people sent to me that they felt were frustrating, they were asking high-level questions, and they were getting low-level answers that really didn't give them the depth of what they needed, and the email didn't give them the opportunity for that back and forth that they needed to be really clear about next steps.
And trustee Koo, I just want to give you an example at the site level. So imagine if a principal went to a district meeting and was given really important information, but came back to the site and didn't sit down face-to-face with the vice principal, the athletic director, like, you know what I mean? But it was sent out over email, or it was forwarded in an email, and that context wasn't present. That can sometimes complicate things in terms of communication, because the way that people interpret what's in an email might not be exactly the way that it was intended.
Okay, thank you. Also, just for future reference, my last name is pronounced Co, so it's trustee Co, but thank you. That's all my questions for this round. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll ask my questions. Can you guys hear me well? Just, okay, I'll make sure. My first question is, who is supposed to do the work to, to find out, I, I guess, where these new positions should be placed?
So I want to make sure that I heard you correctly. So I, I believe you're asking in an, in an organizational chart, how would I determine where positions should be placed? If, if that's not the question, just interrupt me. But there are normally best practices across the industry that determines what is housed in which departments. And then in talking with the superintendent, who carries out the vision of, of the district, then we would look at where should physicians be placed to most effectively help the organization meet the district's goals? So sometimes, so I'm going to give you an example of how it doesn't have to be standardized from place to place. In the district where I was, we had a big problem that had a big negative fiscal impact. We had people filing false workers' comp claims. Therefore, it was determined that workers' comp and return to work would be placed in Human Resources because there was a need for sometimes discipline, and sometimes, you know, helping people. Now, that's not the case everywhere. So in working with the superintendent and looking at best practices, but then leaving room for some differences based on the unique culture and the, and the unique desires of a district is how that's done.
Hi, thank you. My second question, be, with reaching out, I know trustee Co asked this question, but I'm still a little bit unsure how to, to get a solution. Could you give me an example of solution to just reaching out? Since usually, you know, you mentioned Zoom, but usually you get your Zoom invitations through email. So is there a way to, a better way to reach out to, I guess, district staff, for example, admin to reach out to district staff, like some sort of hotline or like phone or something like that?
Okay. Again, I have to get translation because I can barely hear you, but I think, I, 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 I think what Cheryl has explained to me that, that, you know, in, in certain generations, text and email is just everybody's world. And, and I think what you're asking me is what are some other ways to reach, yeah, yeah, to communicate? Yeah, so definitely, I'm a person who, and I'm going to say this tongue-in-cheek, I'm completely joking, but if you call me without texting me, I'm going to be offended. So I'm, I'm completely in that world. That's a joke, by the way. However, when it comes down to complex systems, when it comes down to things of an emotional nature, you have to be able to read a person's body language, hear their tone, see their facial expressions, and communication first and foremost starts with listening, listening to understand, and then responding appropriately, having the emotional intelligence to do so, and then determining next steps. None of that can happen in an email. None of it can happen in an email. So it's ineffective for complex systems, processes, discipline, anything that might be of an emotional or negative nature just simply cannot be handled by, by email or text. So the reason that leadership is exhausting is because we are leaving it all on the floor when we go home at night, because we're talking. Talking to people expends, expends energy. I mean, you're, you're fatigued. It's not a physical fatigue, but it's an emotional fatigue.
Just one moment, sorry. My question was more of how to reach out, like, just in general, like, just reaching out to staff, like, is there some sort of program or some sort of system? Yeah, sorry, I just, I didn't want to get my question used up.
Okay, if I under, you're saying what's the appropriate way to reach out to staff?
Yeah, is there some sort of system that districts may use or something? Maybe the only district admin and district staff could use to communicate besides email?
Yes.
It, I don't want to, can someone help me with the last name? Is it Trujillo?
Yes, yes.
So I think the point that we were trying to make was that there's some type of communication, like, for example, if, if you were to receive some feedback about your performance. So at your school, let's say you were involved in something, and it was important to you that you were doing a good job in the role that you were playing. And there was some feedback that someone needed to give to you that could actually improve your performance, so you could even be better at the job that you were doing. Giving that feedback through email or disciplining through email or anything like that, that isn't going to improve the performance of people. And I think the point we were trying to make, and thank you for pushing on us, because if we didn't make it clear enough, we need to do a better job, is that there just needs to be, based on the conversations that were taking place with HR personnel, there need to be more of that personal contact around performance so that people feel like they can grow, they can promote, they, they, that they can be the best that they can be. And sometimes that's really hard to do in other forms, because you lose that, that personal piece. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, sorry.
Are you talking about a technology system that?
Yes, like some sort of system that can be used to get, the only, you know, only district staff have access to, to communicate back and forth.
You know, that wasn't part of something that we researched, and I'm sure that there are those systems. However, I will say that those would be in the same category as emails and texts. And there are emergency systems that districts have to reach out to, you know, to people in a very quick way when you need to get a message out, and there are all kinds of systems out there for specific purposes. But for the, but for the point of this, talking about leadership communication, those would not serve this purpose. Even in a department, you can have meetings with your, with your staff members where everybody's in that meeting. But as a leader, you build relationships with people, one person by one person, painstakingly slow, because every person has different needs, has different desires, and has, has, you know, needs a different level of support. And while that answer is not popular, and I see it all over the place where people want to email and call it communication, it is the only way to build a clearly articulated, continually improving system. It's, it's painstaking, tiring work. That's why when we go home in the evenings, we're tired, because we've been talking all day and solving problems and bouncing off of each other's energy. But that, that is the work of a leader.
Yeah, thank you. Just a question, this isn't, yeah, for, I guess, president, I, I do have two more questions, correct? I just want to make sure. I do have two more questions.
Yes, you do have two questions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my, my third question would be, who is in charge of updating job descriptions? Would that be HR or site admin?
That, that function should come from Human Resources in collaboration with the leaders of the other departments.
Thank you. And my last question would be, do you think you found what you needed to provide recommendations with the timing you were given?
Some, yeah, sure. We, we, we talked to, gosh. Yeah, we talked to, to many, many people, and, right, we made recommendations based on, on the data that we received, yes.
But do you think it's enough? Do you think that you had enough time?
Yeah, it's a great start. It's definitely enough for a great start, which is where we are right now.
Yeah, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you very much for this first part of your presentation. I have one follow-up question. There was a moment where you were talking about workers' comp, and then you used the phrase game the system. Is that something that you saw here?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question for this part of the presentation, so we can move to the next part.
Good evening, Superintendent Hirst, President Phillips, and Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for your time. Before I get started, I want to thank Business Services and Facilities and Operations for their time and, and assistance during our interviews. The team is deeply dedicated to the school district, and they truly want to do the best they can to support student success. So I wanted to thank both of those divisions. So this slide talks about a school budget. It's a policy document, not just a series of numbers. And it's actually the story of the district in numbers, right? So it share, it shows you where the district priorities are. On the next slide, you'll see, I'm going to build on what Cheryl and Lefay have already discussed. I've heard, that's the slide. On the three major themes identified. So you'll see some different items listed, but the themes and the threads, they're very common threads within them. So in the universal system structure and alignment, we find areas that need work in this area on position control process, budget monitoring, fiscal health, facility usage, fiscal independence, and alignment of fiscal priorities. I'd like to hop over to the communication section. Again, position control, budget monitoring, fiscal health, facility usage, and alignment of fiscal priorities. And the reason I talk about inadequate attention to equity access and achievement last is, again, what Dr. Platter said. If your system, structure, and alignment aren't in place or strong, and your communication is not effective, it is difficult to pay the appropriate attention to equity access and achievement. Next slide. Before I go through the presentation, I wanted to talk about a couple of areas that we talked about, school finance. So you'll hear, and I'm sure you're, you know, all of these areas, right? But just for our audience as well, you'll hear us refer to ADA, average daily attendance. You know that school districts are, they staff according to enrollment, yet we're paid based on average daily attendance, which means when kids are in school. When they miss school, we do not receive funding for that. Multi-year projection, or we'll say NYPD, and that talks about the estimates of our revenues and expenditures and our ending fund balance for the current year. And we, you'll hear us talk about two subsequent years. It's good to even know, do a projection for five years. One-time and ongoing revenues and expenditures. What I really wanted to talk about is a structural deficit here. So one-time is one-time in nature. It can be revenues or expenditures. It may take more than one year to spend it. Some of the SIR funds may take longer, but it's not an ongoing revenue source. Same with expenditures, and typically you don't want to pay for ongoing items with one-time dollars. And when the overall amount of ongoing expenditures exceeds those ongoing revenues, you have a structural deficit. Position control number, you'll hear PCN. It's an assigned number unique to a position within a school district. So each position in the district has a unique PCN number. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. And you'll hear And you'll hear uh business folks talk about SACS, standardized account code structure. That's what all school districts use to account for all their expenditures and revenues. And it's the state required reporting form. So those are the forms that go to the county office. And then they go to the state so that you can get comparable data to, with other districts. So interchangeably, we may say SACS, we may say state required reporting forms. The next slide is an illustration of what can happen when systems, structures, alignment, and communication are not effective. Staff work really, really hard to support school sites and departments, but it's not in the most efficient manner. Wasting time and causing frustration. And you've heard a little bit this evening about that. It's a microcosm of what's going on in the district. So I, I use just some of the departments and, and business services. When you go to the next slide, and you're all, you know exactly where you're headed. So the previous slide, it's people responding to systems that aren't uh clearly communicated or aligned. Because they're trying to get the work done, and they're trying to serve the district. But once you get to full alignment of those structures. You have um strategic and operational goals, and you're really meeting those equity goals as well, because you're not spinning your wheels. You're being very efficient with your time and your work. And even looking at the slide, you feel more relaxed when they're all, all the arrows are headed the right direction. So I just wanted to share that with the um board this evening. The next slide, um, you did hear about position control. So our first, um, the thing that we need to address immediately. Is that the district's position control process and related internal controls need to follow industry best practices. Again, with ninety percent of the district's budget comprised of salaries and benefits, this must be addressed immediately. So um, you've heard us talk, we need HR, human resources, business services, and payroll all to come together and update position control. I know the teams are working on this. Training of the process to ensure there's a collective understanding of position control and best practices. And those best practices include division of duties that are clear, timely processing, accounting for positions and costs. In a, in a complete and timely manner, and ensuring that staffing is analyzed or adjusted based on staffing ratios and enrollment. And then consistently following the position control processes and practices established. You saw this slide earlier. We talk about how interconnected those three areas are. You can see there's very distinct roles for each of the areas, and then the overlap. The times that they come together, they talk about issues and concerns, they, they're balancing each other and ensuring all of the data is accurate. So in this slide, you can see the budget process. So once a position is approved. Uh, either it's filling of a vacancy or adding a new position. A good process would have that budget adds or deletes any position control numbers. Again, it is unique to each position in the district. So if I was a teacher at a school, I have a unique person, uh, PCN number. If I get transferred to another school, that PCN stays. So like, say it's at Deans, the PCN I was in stays at Deans, or because that is aligned with the staffing allocations. And I would go into an available vacancy. And so it is a lot of work, but again, ninety percent of the budget, we want to ensure everything is as accurate as possible. So that employees get paid appropriately. Budget assigns the funding code, adds it to the budget. HR does the demographic data, right? Their social security number, their address, and all of that. And then they assign the employee to the appropriate salary schedule. And payroll then can validate all the information based on the, the records, and they pay. So that's how you balance the division of duties. The district's current and future fiscal health is unclear at this time. Uh, we recommend immediately include all newly negotiated positions into the budget. Update, update changes for other positions. There were change in some funding. And adjust budgets with appropriate journal entries. We want to input the district's cost both one time and ongoing into the multi-year projections. So that the first interim report will fairly represent the district's structural deficit and plan to balance the budget. When to work with human resources to examine, examine staffing formulas and align appropriately. And review comparable districts' financial data to identify and evaluate outlier expenditures to facilitate further budget discussions. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. The district's current and future hell, uh fiscal health is, it could, we want it communicated more clearly. Um, finance is complex, and it's critical that it's communicated in an easy-to-understand manner. So we want to develop some easy-to-understand set of assumptions that tell the story of the budget. Using charts and graphs and texts that accompany the state reporting forms. Ensure presentations are clear, concise, and short, and align with those assumptions. And then sometimes there's additional data that the board may require that could be included in the board, uh, the board packets. Or included in with that state reporting form as supplementary, supplement, supplement. Sorry, it's getting late supplementary um documents. So it's really important to have all of that data in easy-to-understand and digest manner. So I, I do want to share that how complex the budget is. And you know, the state of California, it, the, the budget at the state level is so volatile. We're highly dependent on the state budget for our revenues, right? And you'll recall about a year and a half ago, going on almost two years ago, the state had a fifty-four billion dollar deficit. And then within a year, as almost a seventy-six billion dollar surplus. And so it is very challenging to communicate this. We want our stakeholders to understand, and so we have to be very clear and concise. And it's challenging, because when things change at the state, it directly impacts us, and we really have to pivot to respond to that. So um. We'll go ahead and move. In, in that communication, this is the SACS format, so it's not very friendly, is it? It's required, and we all have to turn it in this way, and Dr. Wold and I can get into this, and we, you know, we understand what all the numbers. But it's not a user-friendly document. So we want to make sure that we have assumptions that accompany that, that make it clear to the readers. Here's an example of a chart. It's just an example, but shows multiple years of revenue and expenditures. So instead of looking at rows and rows and columns of numbers, um, let me explain this chart. The uh red line at the top is the revenue. And then the bar chart is all of the expenditures in the school district. The gray is certificated salaries, the gold is classified salaries, and then you have benefits all the way up. And wherever you see the bar chart taller than the revenue, you're spending more than you're receiving. So it's just a, an example of a chart that may be used to show multiple years in an easy-to-understand way. A user-friendly budget can be a great communication vehicle. It reflects district goals. Uh, displays as a teaching document using charts and interesting displays to tell the same information. And then people learn differently. You can also have it in text. But also spending the time to write stories about some of the areas that are board priorities are, are critical to sharing the information to stakeholders. Um, these are the ingredients of a budget. So you're gonna want to see in your board presentations. Clearly what your revenues and expenses are, your enrollment, your AD, and I would include your charter schools. Because that can have an impact, obviously, on your district ADA. What your reserves and ending fund balances are, LCAP priorities, and then whatever the superintendent of the board would like to share as some other areas. And understanding what's going on at the state level, so that you can communicate with your stakeholders. I want to commend the board on their reserve levels. I know you have um policy to keep the reserve levels higher than the required minimum. And the minimum is woefully low. And this is a chart that School Services of California puts together. That shows the average ending fund balance for Unified School Districts, elementary and high school. And the latest da- data they had was for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. You know, we just closed the books for last year. And so you can see you're, you're close to the average. And so I, I do want to commend the board on that. What the reserves allow, as you know, is. A little more time to respond to the changes that can happen at the state level in, in, in short notice. So West Contra Costa Unified School District, like many educational agencies in California, is experiencing declining enrollment. That is happening across the state, and increased costs that outpace the available funding. And this has all been exacerbated by COVID-nineteen global pandemic. Additionally, we have new requirements implementing uh universal trans- transitional kindergarten, and that's fantastic. But it is, you know, more pressure on the system, right? And so you are not alone in this area. It's imperative that we have a strategic process to address changes in facility usage, including under and over-enrolled schools. Student placement, integrated classroom utilization for special education and other programs. And the need to provide a additional and age-appropriate classrooms. For the newly legislated universal transitional kindergarten. This is complex, and I'm sure that one of you will say, how long will this take? So there's components of this that can happen right away, and I'll give you some examples. But this is a complex um. Issue, and it takes time, and it takes, you know, bringing folks together. It's just really important that facilities is involved in this process, because they're the ones that have to. They provide valuable information, and they want to respond to the needs. And so I um, it's just very imperative that you start this process, but let me give you a couple of examples. Um, so understanding the, uh, having a common understanding of programmatic needs and information and its relation to facilities. So if someone decides, I want to have this program, and it's independent of the whole system. Right? And it gets approved, then you have facilities responding. And it may be a just, a, a school site that has, doesn't have capacity. And they know that two years down the road, it's not going to be able to sustain a specific program. Now, there's ways to meet the needs, maybe at neighboring schools. It's just complex. And so we want to make sure that we have a holistic approach on how we add programs. In my previous district, we had um directors all come together so that facilities reviewed it, fiscal reviewed it, transportation. Everybody reviewed it, technology, so they would know what would be needed before a recommendation came forward to the cabinet. And that way you have everyone's eyes on it, and it may still be that you move forward with it, but at least you know the pros and cons and all the things to expect down the road. Facility should be included in the discussions from the beginning, because that's what they can do with their expertise. They can tell you, if you hold summer school here, there may be an impact with air conditioning. I mean, they just have that knowledge that they can get ahead of it and provide some valuable feedback. So I recommend that you establish a facility subcommittee of district stakeholders to evaluate the impact of program offerings, community access. And the cost impact to use uh district facility buildings. And so the communication around that is critical. Incorporate a plan for universal transitional kindergarten, integrated into the facility's master plan. I know facilities is working on it, but they have to be part of the whole program placement, so that they know. And you, as, as you know, a facility just doesn't appear or disappear in a moment. It takes a lot of time. Establish and facilitate a clear process to request facility improvements with specific prioritization criteria. And identify specific funding mechanisms. So um, you know, you have a facility master plan, and you have bond money, and you have money from the state to do certain projects, but there's always more. And so what's a process and a, and a budget set up to address safety and all of those things, so that it's, so you have equity across the system. And um, so that would be very helpful. I'll share something that's easier to resolve that we did in our previous district. We had school sites that needed new furniture. And some sites have a larger enrollment, may have a larger budget. So they were able to replenish furniture, where you might have a smaller school that doesn't have the discretionary funding for that. Establish, you know, where that funding should come from. Facilities generally doesn't have a budget for that, because they're working on construction. So what our district did is the board set aside some one-time funding. And they did an inventory of all of the furniture across the district, and they prioritize the greatest needs first. So each year we were able to uh replenish furniture. And then we're putting it all on this fifteen to eighteen-year cycle, so that principals can focus on teaching and learning. And we had a budget set aside to replenish furniture. We also used S R funding to help with that. Furniture outside, the picnic benches, some were in poor shape. And we wanted our kids to just feel wonderful and safe at school and have quality, you know, areas to, to have their lunch, as well as some outside learning. And so we were able to use some of that and really jumpstart the work. So that's a little, that's easier than some of the complexities in here. But there are some processes that could be put in place right away, and others that will take some time. And then develop a standardized classroom space usage policy. So typically, a district will say, you get so many extra classrooms for other activities, after-school programs, maybe PTA. And I, I know you have a policy here, but some sites that have more open classrooms, you know, if there's space, they fill it up. But that's more that has to be cleaned, and so sticking to a standard. Because if you're at a site that's impacted by enrollment, and you filled it with all these programs. We want to make sure that first priority is that first instruction that we have classrooms for that. So these are just some areas that um need some attention and involving facilities in the process. Um, and I know they're doing a great job, so I just wanted to add that. The next area is, the district is fiscally independent from the Contra Costa County Office of Education. We recommend moving that to uh working collaboratively with the county office, first step. And they used to have um viewing rights to the district's financials, because you're on the same system. But it's not happening anymore. I don't know. It, it's a historical thing. But I would work collaborative, collaboratively with them to look at becoming uh fiscally dependent on them. It's um, across the state, there's not a lot of school districts that are independent, and they tend to, tend to be very large. That are independent from a county. And we believe that this will, first of all, help with workload, because there are certain things you have to do when you're fiscally independent. The auditing, the balancing of all of the records that could be handled more efficiently at the county office. Now, this would be of need further discussion with them and would take time for them to gear up. But it is usual, pretty unusual for a district this size to be fiscally independent. And then the district should evaluate all outlier expenditures, including existing contracts, to determine best value of service, clear objectives, and accountability. And this, you can determine if you're doing, have duplicative services, ensure that expenditures align with the district um priorities. And do a root cause analysis to adequately, adequately address next steps and identify issues. There are some areas where your district does spend more than other districts. And again, this is just one consideration. You want to take this in conjunction with your achievement data, your demographic data, and your personnel allocations altogether. To look at, is this where we want to put all of the resources? And I think in education, we always do, right? But there's limited resources. The state, we're still in California, you know, near the bottom in funding, so. everything can be a priority, but there are certainly some great work that we can do with the funding that we get. And so I think just putting all that information together. And let me tell you, give you an example of that as well. The district contracts their transportation, and my previous district did as well. And you don't have a router, which is a specialized position that holds the vendor accountable to make sure that the routes are as efficient as possible. Now, they may be very efficient. And I know you have program folks that are working in special education that are working with a vendor. But their priority is really focused on program placement for the student. And they can look and see if it seems reasonable, but it's such a specialized area. What I would recommend is you bring someone in, a transportation specialist, to evaluate the routes. And they be maybe very strong and very little savings that a router could provide, and then you know. Or it could be you could eliminate some of the routes, combine some routes to make it more efficient, less time for kids on the bus. And it would make the space to have a router in-house. And so I just found that not having someone with that expertise holding the vendor accountable, and I'm not saying anything about the vendor, but it's just the checks and balances. So that's an example of looking at outliers. You do spend quite a bit more in transportation than comparable districts. We looked both at districts with the same demographics, similar enrollments, size, UPP count the same of the unduplicated count. And we also looked at your county and transportation and special ed were both an outlier. And so it's, there may be perfectly good reason. In my previous district, we were an outlier in counseling. And it was a board priority that there was a counselor at every single elementary school, even if they were just had very low enrollment. And so we knew, we knew why, because that was specifically a board priority. So this chart illustrates some similar sized districts and where our special education costs are. And then my final, our final recommendation is bringing it together, prioritizing the high-risk areas that I've talked about this evening, as well as FICMAT. And I would recommend that you bring FICMAT in to do another assessment, not just a fiscal health risk analysis, but multi-year projection analysis as well, following the January budget proposal and prior to second interim. So that gives you some time. And that concludes this portion of the report.
Thank you very much, Board. I just want to remind you all, we are trying to get questions in, but we do need to go back to closed session. So please be succinct. Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips. I apologize. I want to make sure I say your last name correctly. Would you mind repeating it?
Chris Tacos.
Chris, Greece, Chris.
Chris Tacos.
Okay, perfect. Dr. Chris Tacos, thank you so much.
Whatever you say is fine.
Thank you for your presentation. I have four questions for you. My first one. Compared to other large urban districts, would you say that we're spending an appropriate amount on people and staff compared to contracts, consultants, et cetera, or other expenditures?
I didn't do that exact comparison, but your adopted budget had over 90%, like 91% on salaries and benefits. So that's a little high. Generally, you're seeing around 85 to, you know, 87, 88%.
Okay, thank you.
But I didn't compare it to the contracts.
Okay. Um, on one of your slideshows, you showed the school services average for revenue for, excuse me, reserves. And on it, you showed, thank you, you're going back to it. Thank you. You showed average for unified school districts. I'm assuming that includes basic aid unified districts and many other districts that might not look like ours. What would your recommendation for districts that look like us, like large urbans? What would be your recommendation for reserve?
So thank you. That's a great question. The General Office of Finance and Government, they recommend around a 17% total. But again, you know, you're the minimum, the 3% doesn't even cover a half a month of payroll. So it's one-time funding. It's balancing, setting reserves aside with also meeting the needs of of your students. And so that is always a constant, you know, balance. I think that's you know, pretty good. It's pretty.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. My third question is more global. Would you say that at the moment other large urban districts in California are experiencing deficits like we are? Or are we in a specific problem that you're not seeing across California?
So related to over and under-enrolled schools, I think it's similar. So I was in a large urban district and we had so demographic shift, right? And through some changes that may happen in the city, then sometimes there's unintended consequences or impacts to allocation of equity, right? So people shift and then maybe programs aren't adjusted appropriately or so it's a very common problem in large school districts. And since over 60% of the districts in California are declining, this it's complex. It's not easy, but it does need to be looked at. And my previous district, we had similar things where more commercial, well, I'm not saying this is happening here, but we had more commercial coming into some older parts of the city. And so the enrollment was low there. And then I know you have this, you have some areas where there's growth, and those school sites don't have a capacity to meet all of that growth. Sometimes it's different boundaries. I mean, there's different solutions, but it needs to be a group of folks really walking through this. That is a multi-year multi-year work.
Okay, thank you. And my last question for you. In your recommendation about not being independent to the county, what are, where are some negative aspects of not being independent to the county?
So we had a couple of examples of folks that got paid that shouldn't, and not that that can't happen. But there are certain flags in a system that that a county wouldn't have released a warrant if this wasn't addressed. So that could be, you know, TB, it could be making sure they have their proper shots and records done. So that's something that's very helpful. It's the workload truly. When you look at all of the work that needs to be done, where those that time can go in budget and other areas and having the county do that work. And then it's just an extra set of independent checks and balances.
Sorry, Dr. Chris Tacos, I think I ordered it weird. What are the negatives of being dependent to the county?
What's negative? Being dependent. Maybe there might be a time lag with some of the audits. So they routinely audit checks to vendors. They want to make sure it aligns with a contract. And so you have to send the information to them, right? So it might be, it could be getting done quicker in-house. I don't have data on that. So I'm just trying to think of what some what some negatives would be. But for the most part, I think you would have organizations like FICMAT really pushing for all districts to be dependent on their county offices.
Okay, thank you so much. That was my last question.
Thank you.
Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. I once again would like to pick up right where trustee Gonzalez who I left off. And I don't believe anywhere in the FICMAT analysis that they did was a mention of being reliant on the county. I know you can't speak for FICMAT, but do you have any thoughts about why that might be missed or not included after a district that had so many qualified budgets?
I think it's not an indicator of fiscal risk or health. So their fiscal risk health analysis they did has predetermined areas they looked at. So that's not necessarily something that impacts fiscal health. I think it's more workload and an extra set of checks and balances because the county still holds the district accountable. They get their interim reports. They still get items. And you have to turn stuff into the county. You have to balance your batches and all that. It's mostly the workload, but another set of checks and balances. So it's not on the fiscal risk health analysis, and that's why they didn't comment. I know personally from the CEO, he recommends it and actually wanted legislation on it. But that's just a conversation I had with Mr. Fine.
Okay, thank you. The next question is about budget presentations. And can you provide, it doesn't have to be now, but even offline examples of districts that do this consistently well that we can look at and learn from?
Absolutely. I shared a district that I heard. And so I want to look at it. I gave some examples to the team. And I heard of another district down south that does a really great job. So I will get that information to the superintendent to share with you.
And then I may want to have an offline conversation about position control because I, so that I 100% understand it. And I know we don't have time tonight, but can you summarize? I see what you have here. Can you quickly summarize what specifically this district is doing that doesn't match this graph? And then we have a position control position, which then we had a little exchange about that perhaps it's a shared responsibility rather than just a position. So if you might be able to elaborate on that.
So we think the position should be in one department or the other. Some of the things, and it's just a part of a position. So usually it's in budget because it's so much of what budget does. Some of the things that we found that were not happening is there was a backlog of changes that occurred either to funding classifications. There was a number of items that got backlogged and were not reflected in the budget system or the financial system, which then requires multiple journal entries to update the data accurately. And so that was one of the largest, biggest findings we found. And just other paper. Yeah, other paperwork that was not, and I say paperwork, they have a paper flow system that's online, was not being done in a timely manner. And what impacts is then payrolls impacted, right? Everybody's impacted. Fiscal has to do more. It's just not a good way to operate. So then if something isn't in appropriately, then payroll can't pay appropriately, which causes journal entries. It's a lot of extra work.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? For me? Do I go one more? Will we? Final question is, will we receive like a written report of everything that you research and bring forward? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Smith.
My question is, how is how is a district, well, let me say this. Is how a district spends its money a value statement?
Is it a value statement? Is that what she?
Yes.
I would say yes. It's, it reflects the mission vision of the school district.
Thank you so much. Is the budget monitoring occurring in our district to a degree that you would find to be satisfactory?
I would say at this point, no, because all of the data related to the positions have not been updated. So you can't monitor it until that's updated. I think there's processes in place that they look at budget, obviously, but we want it to be accurate.
Thank you for that. And then how well did you find that our stakeholders understand our budget as it's presented?
That's a great question. I was taught, you know, mostly talked to a business end facilities about other processes. So I didn't specifically ask that question, but it's something that we could ask stakeholders through a survey.
Thank you. And did you have conversations with other internal organizations that deal with budget, for example, our CBOC?
With, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, who you said with whom?
Our CBOC. Our Bond Oversight Committee.
No, I did not have a, I did not have a conversation with them, but we can add that.
Thank you. Those are four questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian.
Yeah, thank you, President Philip. On the first one will be how would you how would you how would you rank a structural deficit in the district? How would you rank a deficit?
So that is a great question. Until a position control is updated, I can't comment on that.
Okay. How would you rank our staffing in the district?
So staffing allocated or staffing in business and facilities?
Business.
So I as I said earlier, you have a great staff that are very dedicated to the district. Whether or not all the positions are filled and they're staffed appropriately is some of the work that Dr. Platter will be doing so that we can look at where those gaps are. That's why I was looking for ways that don't cost money to provide relief, such as the dependence on the county office, to provide some relief and more time to work on other things.
Okay. And then the, that's when I have is how, how is our physical district health?
District, I'm sorry. Again, as soon as we get all those positions updated and an updated multi-year projection should come to you at first interim, that clearly says that to you. It's a great question. Thank you.
Cole.
So regarding employees that choose not to be vaccinated, will they also continue being paid or will the county also not issue checks until it's corrected?
Yeah, I'm not. I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
But okay, and with the graph that predicted the future of our district spending, did this graph also consider spending towards COVID-related sources for the future? Or will it be updated or corrected as time goes by?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear her.
So with, can you hear me now? Okay, so with the graph that projected the future of our district spending, did the graph also consider our spending towards COVID-related sources for the future? Or will it be updated as time goes by?
It will be updated. We actually did use your multi-year projection that was in your adopted budget, but I know you've had some changes since then. So let's update this for your first interim. Great question.
And then was there a specific reason as to why the district didn't collaborate or merge with the Contra Costa County Office of Education? Just want to ask some clarity about that.
You know, I really don't know. I think it's been a long time that they, that you have been independent. So I'm not sure why.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
For you.
Yes. Are classroom space issues at most sites?
At most, I can't answer if it is occurring at most sites. I do know specifically that you have sites that are impacted by enrollment and sites that have space. And so the classroom usage, I know that it was shared with me that some use more than the six classrooms available. And so the classroom usage, I know that it was shared with me that some use more than the six classrooms available. But I did not get how many. And that happens everywhere, just, just so you know.
Thank you. Yeah. What is, or where is transportation funding being spent? Do you have that information?
So your transportation is for special education only, so it is in your special education costs.
Got it. Thank you. And what would standardizing classroom, a space policy, classroom space policy look like?
Why does standardizing space policy, why is that important? So for a number of reasons.
Sorry, sorry, that was my question. What would it look like to standardize classroom space?
So you said a, in fact, you have a policy, I believe. Louis would know that, but his director of facilities, Ellen, shared with me that currently they allow sites six classrooms if they're available to use for your after-school programs and other programs. But some sites are using more. So the benefit is you're not cleaning classrooms that are above and beyond your allocation, right? And you're not providing utilities and all of the things. So you're managing the workload of your custodial staff, your grounds, and all of that is one benefit. Secondly, when a site is impacted and they need to add more classrooms, then generally there's a lot of work to move programs out of spaces above those six classrooms.
Thank you. And my last question is, is high enrollment specifically due to just people leaving California? Or is there info about whether or not it has to do with people leaving just the district?
High enrollment? Oh, declining enrollment?
Yeah.
So that's a great question. In California, the growth has slowed down significantly in the whole state. And so you see shifts across the state in that enrollment. People will move to more affordable housing areas. COVID-19 has shown us other impacts where folks can work wherever they're working remotely. So now they're moving into other areas in the state of California that might, they might not have lived before because now they don't have to commute. And so those are all different. It's, it's complex, right? But overall, the growth in California has slowed down significantly. And the Department of Finance and other agencies project that will continue to decline over time. The affordable housing in California is a big issue.
So it's not just our district, or it's not, it's just solely our district's reason for people leaving the district. It's just living California.
I'm so sorry, I didn't hear the question.
So it's, it's not that people are specifically leaving this district to go to other districts.
No.
Or it's that they just have to move because it's just so expensive.
You do have a large charter school population, so that does impact your enrollment. And I was in a district with twelve charter schools. So generally, they are students within your fifty, fifty charter schools. Yeah, so they, you know, that does impact, there's a lot, a number of things that impact. And COVID-19 has exacerbated all of it.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. I have a question about slide forty-seven. Can you unpack that slide for me? What it means, what the implications of it are, the effects?
We're trying to find the slide.
We're trying to see the numbers, which? Is it the chart?
Special ed.
This one?
I need a bigger one. So this is an analysis includes all amounts allocated to the special education goal. So this is part of the SACS coding. It has the revenues and then it has the per-student calculations based on the students with disabilities. And so you can see the revenues in that gray, gray line, and then the expenditures in the orange line. And they do it on a per pupil, but you can see your contributions, how high your contributions are to specially compared to similar-sized districts. So it's worth really digging in and looking at the differences between the other, other similar districts or whichever districts you would like to compare to. You might want to compare to one that has maybe lower spending per pupil, but higher outcomes. So there's a number of ways that you can examine this. And it's just provides a flag to say, hey, we're spending more here. Let's take a look at, at the why.
Do you have any idea of how or why we are so out of line in comparison to our peers?
So I know that Cheryl will be talking more about it. I don't have the why yet. This is where you start to dig into, here's an outlier, just like I talked about earlier with counseling in my district. You, you contact these districts, you start having conversations about things that they're doing. Transportation may be part of it if it's, because it's an outlier as well. And so we don't, I don't have the data. It's something that you use in conjunction with all the other data. As education data, technology, everything to figure out what's going on and what can we do to improve this.
So this, this is actually a really good live example of how important it is, the impact of budget on, on achievement. Because it was actually the Forecast Five data that, that Janie pulled from the system that helped me see that not only was there an over, a higher expenditure, but when we looked at the same districts against each other in the return on investment, on achievement, we saw West Contra Costa with a higher spending, but a lower return on investment. And so as someone in the curriculum and instruction department, then I went digging for the why. Why do we have a lower return on investment? Where are we spending our dollars in special education? So.
Thank you very much. It was my hope this evening that we would be able to do multiple rounds with you of questions. But we do have to go back to closed session. If each one of us had four additional questions, so that will be twenty-eight. If we were to send them to the superintendent, and he was the forward, four questions apiece from each of us, would you be okay with answering those for us? Okay, thank you very much. So Board, if you have another four questions of cleanup, send those. And please just send four so they don't charge us more. But send your additional questions into the superintendent and we'll get some cleanup for you if you have them. So with that, I want to thank you all for the work that you've been doing and partnering with us to be able to help our district move forward. We are very enthusiastic about working with you. And I think what you've seen in some of these departments, you will see across our system. There are folks here who are hungry for change, positive change, and who really want and have been putting their shoulders in, in really leaning in. So I do think you're right. We can do this. We just need a little more structure and help, and Dr. Hurst is providing that for us. And so we're on the right track. And this is the beginning. It may not have sounded good. It didn't a lot of it. But this is the beginning of the change that everyone has been asking for. So thank you, Dr. Hurst, for starting this process. And Dr. Hurst, do you have anything you want to say to close this out for tonight?
I'd just like to share my appreciation for our guests' come and share their expertise. We really appreciate you. Thank you so much, Cheryl. Also, I wanted to share for my staff, certainly, you've been working extremely hard. So I wanted to acknowledge all the work that you've been putting in, especially all of the executive team who are here and also our security specialists that are here as well, and also Mr. Booker. So I just want to take the time to just thank all of our staff, all of your hard work. Thank you so much.
Mr. Phillips, I'm sorry, point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
How are we gonna get those questions, the answered questions, back out to the public? How are they going to be reported back out? Is that going to be reported back out in a Friday memo? Is that going to be reported back out on November fourth? How are those additional cleanup questions going to be reported back out to the public?
So that's not a point of order. A point of order is procedurally what we're doing in here. So if you have questions, please get them to Dr. Hurst, and he can work with you or whoever he needs to, to make sure that the answers get to where they need to be. So with that, we, Board, we are going to return to closed session to finish our business. Can I have a motion to recess back into closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Gonzalez Hoi. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that. Usually it's trustee Christian who does it.
Seconded by Reckler. So Board on the vote?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Dr. Hurst, to my point of inquiry, sorry, to my point of order, but to my point of inquiry, please work to get those questions back out. Jamila Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Cole, yes.
For you, yes.
Phillips, yes, the motion carries. So we are recessing back into closed session, and we should be out to finish and close out the meeting by ten-thirty. Thank you. The board is reconvening open session. Dr. Hurst, do we have a report out of closed session?
No, sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. It's now ten-twenty-six. So I am just going to announce that the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on November third, and this meeting is adjourned.